Three meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners and I'm going to ask our Sheriff, Sean Kilkeny, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, September is a couple of different things of the month. First, National Preparedness Month. As many of you know, our country and region have faced unpredictable weather patterns causing record-breaking heat waves, drought, wildfires, and flooding. National Preparedness Month is an observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. This year's National Preparedness theme is Prepare to Protect. And to stay safe, we encourage all of our residents to prepare to protect by signing up for emergency alerts on the Ready Monco Notification System, packing an emergency bag, and encouraging others to do the same. Signing up for Ready Monco is free. The app delivers alerts about severe weather and other important events in Montgomery County to the devices of your choice. And to sign up for Ready Monco, you can visit www.montgomerycountypa.gov/readymonco. September is also Hunger Action Month. Each September, in conjunction with Feeding America, hunger relief partners rally to mobilize everyone to get involved with ending hunger in their community. One of the ways you can get involved here in Montgomery County is to support the Ninth Annual Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board's Virtual Freedom from Hunger Food Drive. All donations benefit the Monco Anti-Hunger Network, which provides food to many local shelters, churches, and food pantries. The goal this year is to raise the monetary equivalent of 60,000 pounds of food, adding to the 164,000 pounds of food that has already raised since the program's inception in 2015. The food drive kicked off on August 25th and will run through October 31st. And if you would like to donate, you can visit www valleysforge.org/hunger. And if you would like to donate physical food, you can join the Magellan Behavioral Health for their Second Annual Magellan Buxmont Food Drive from September 11th to October 30th with multiple drop-off locations throughout Montgomery County. If you'd like to volunteer at a local hunger relief organization or learn more about advocating for healthy hunger solutions, please visit the Monco Anti-Hunger Network at www.moncoantihunger.org. And finally, I'd like to congratulate one of our local mayors, Mayor Yenive Aaronson from Conshohocken. He was named the Pennsylvania 2023 Mayor of the Year by the Pennsylvania State Mayors Association. He was recognized last night at the Conshohocken Borough Meeting, so I'd like to congratulate Mayor Aaronson and his wife Sarah and his son Thomas. With that, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Winder.
Great, good morning, everyone, and thank you Commissioner Lawrence. Hope everyone had a nice Labor Day weekend and wishing all of the kids that are going back to school this week and the week before all the best this school year. So first, I'd like to acknowledge that September 11th through the 15th is Child Welfare Worker Appreciation Week. Every day in Pennsylvania, thousands of children are at risk of child abuse and neglect or have been removed from their home due to abuse and neglect. The challenging task of investigating child abuse, providing services to families, assessing safety, and providing services to assure that children have healthy nurturing care and support as they transition into adulthood falls to child welfare professionals. Many times, these skilled professionals enter situations that put their personal safety at risk to protect children. They work with families who are in crisis situations, struggling with mental health, challenges, suffering from drug and alcohol afflictions, poverty, and many other difficult issues. Child welfare professionals often endure long hours, low pay, high demands, and a lot of criticism, all of which have a great impact on their personal lives. I just want to give a shout out to all of our various departments here in the county, such as the Office of Children and Youth, our Foster Care Office, the Orphans Court, and many, many others who work hard every day to reduce and prevent injury and sometimes save the lives of children. These hard-working professionals also help provide a more loving and caring environment that is so critical for early child development, health, and growth. We're also grateful to all of our nonprofit partners who are on the front lines as well. So while next week is a special week for child welfare workers' awareness, know that we appreciate all the work that you do throughout the course of the year. Next, I want to talk a little bit about HHS and the Back to School Drive results. When I was a kid, I remember how excited I was to receive a fresh box of crayons, and that was a long time ago, a new bookbag, and other supplies to start the new school year. It really helps give kids the start they need, knowing that they will have all the tools they need to help in their success. However, there are families who are struggling to buy food and provide shelter for their families. For them, it can be difficult to provide school supplies for their children. Thanks to the compassionate employees in our Office of Health and Human Services and others around the county, some of those families' burdens will be alleviated. HHS recently completed its annual Back to School Drive for students in need. This year's drive received 143 pre-filled backpacks, close to 7,000 loose school supply items to supply over 700 children with what they need for a successful school year. We would like to thank HHS's donations coordinator Veronica Hillman and staff for their time in organizing the event and delivering the supplies. We also appreciate the generosity of all of our employees, residents, workplaces, and organizations who donated supplies and money towards this much-needed project. I hope all of our students, like I said before, have a great school year in Montgomery County. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I too would like to wish everyone a healthy and productive new school year. And I'd like to provide a few comments related to the historic prison here in Norristown. That was a topic of discussion at the last board meeting, and since then, I've heard from many members of the public sharing their disappointment in the decision to demolish that historic prison. I would just like to urge the administration to consider other options. After all, we are representatives of the people, and it's clear to me from the output of the public, particularly here locals in Norristown, that they'd like to see the prison preserved to some capacity. So hopefully, there's other options before it's demolished, whether we can keep the shell of the structure or get it to a state of repair where we can sell it to an outside party and then have it on the tax rolls where it generates more real estate tax growth for Norristown, Norristown School District, as well as the county. So I hear the public lay out in clear, and I just urge the administration to join me in exploring new options to make sure that historic prison is preserved because that's what the public wants. Okay, concludes my comments.
Thank you. We'll move on to announcements, commendations, and presentations now. And first up is Dr. Williams for National Suicide Prevention Month. I had to find you there.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. I'm Dr. Tamara Williams, and I'm the Director for the Department of Health and Human Services. This is National Suicide Prevention Month, and I'm here to talk a little bit about that because we want to recognize the importance of informing and engaging both professionals as well as the general public about suicide prevention and warning signs. Montgomery County's Department of Health and Human Services has played a significant role in providing education, data, and programs to address suicide and its impact on families. But we all have a role to play in suicide awareness and prevention. So I'm going to turn it over to Anna Trout from our Office of Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Early Intervention to introduce herself and also to provide some information about rates of suicide in Montgomery County, as well as programs and where people can go for help.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Thank you Commissioners for having me here today. September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. And what I want to talk about today, it's so interesting in suicide prevention work, there is a lot of nuance, and it's complicated, and no one person's hard time is the same as another person's hard time. So we're going to talk about things to look out for, we're going to talk about data and information, but what our Task Force always tries to encourage everyone to understand is that by virtue of being a human being, you are already an expert on this topic and on this work. And so the Suicide Prevention Task Force is a community group of folks who are looking to eliminate suicide in Montgomery County. And this is one of those things where two things can be true at once. Suicide prevention is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that we do. It is also the minimum of what we can do. We want to prevent death, but this group is also very interested in working together towards helping ensure there's a community that feels worth waking up for, right? So those two things can be true at once. And another thing that they hold dear that are two things true at once is that suicide is a problem, and it is scary, and we want to stop it, and there is help, and there are ways to get help and support, and that doesn't have to be the end of somebody's story. So who is on the Task Force? Anybody that comes close enough and gives me their email address. You join us on the Task Force. But you can see the list up here, attempt survivors, lost survivors and family members, educators, law enforcement, community members, faith leaders. If you see yourself reflected in that list, good, that means join us, right? You will be among friends. If you don't see yourself reflected in that list, we need you then. We need your perspective. We need your help in making sure we get this work right and that we're doing trainings and making information and doing interventions that resonate with people. So you can check out more information about that work at montgomerycountypa.gov/suicideprevention. And when you join the Task Force, it is low barrier, it is low expectation, it is whatever works for you. It could be anything from you are an observer on our emails and you chime in every once in a while to say this was helpful or this wasn't, I have an idea, up to do you want to be a trainer? Do you want to host groups? Do you go to a church and you want to make a Mental Health Awareness Month? All of those things. I want to talk a little bit about data. Whenever we talk about data around suicide, I really want to honor the fact that we're going to talk numbers, and numbers that go up or numbers that go down, and rates. Every single one of those numbers is a person, and it represents family members and their friends. And so when I tell you that our rates are low, I don't do that without having respect for the families who did lose somebody, because even one person is too many, right? And if it was your family member that you lost, do you care if the rate went down? No, because that was your family member who was lost. So in Montgomery County in 2022, we lost 100 people to suicide. This number is up from 2021, which was a historically low year of 83 people. Our rates, however, have stayed below what we know to be the Pennsylvania average rate, and our rate for 2022 still remains below what our rates were in 2018, 2019, and 2020. So what does that mean? It means we're doing good things, but there's still a lot of work to do. I mean, it's a nuanced answer, right? It means it's a mixed bag. There are a lot for us to be proud of and then a lot of areas to still explore. In 2022, we know that the most amount of suicides happened in the Lower Marion, Upper Marion, and Abington areas. Our highest age group was this 55 to 64-year-old range, and that's been true for many years now. The second highest age group would be our 25 to 34-year-olds. We did lose four young people under the age of 20. This is a group that we keep a really close eye on. I'm happy to say there are some years where we don't have any numbers to report in there, and that is always the goal. Unfortunately, in 2022, that wasn't the case. Most of these deaths happen during the school year. That's why we partner really hard with the intermediate unit and the different school districts throughout the county to do things like suicide prevention training for all ninth graders, suicide prevention and crisis training for teachers and administration. But any help or ideas on how to support young people, especially during the school year, are always welcome. For folks who like things sort of in chart breakdown, our numbers really do, they reflect what we know to be national trends. Who do we lose the most? We lose more men than women. We lose predominantly white men. The number one sort of means or manner of death are firearms. Next would be hanging, and then next would be overdoses. I had talked about the towns that lost the most people. I think it's also important to look at things in sort of catchment or geographic areas because our towns and our communities are so interconnected with each other. And so the highest, you can see the highest are Abington, Lansdale, Norristown, and then the Western Region. So I want to be helpful. What do I look out for, right? So these are different kinds of things that we should notice about one another. I cannot emphasize the italicized bullet under behavioral clues enough to trust your instincts. I have to go back to this idea. You are a human being. You have felt grief, you have felt sadness, you have felt alone. You are an expert on that. If you feel like something is going on, ask somebody, are you okay? Are you thinking of suicide? Do you need help connecting to someone, right? And pay attention to the things that people say, things that change in their behavior, things that are going on that could be hard or make people feel isolated, or something that could fracture the way a person understands their place in this world. That is a really hard position to be in, and when we look out for each other, we offer connection at times when maybe that's what a person needs most. Some of the things that the Task Force does that I'll talk about on the next slide are offer free trainings, do consultation. It's, you know, if you're crafty, we have the Peyton Heart Project, which is awesome. The big project for this year is the 2023 Pinwheel Project. So at 15 locations throughout the county, there are going to be 100 pinwheels, and then this sign that you see there on the right in memory of the people that we lost and a call to action and a call to hope for the people who are still here. And so one of the exciting things about the Task Force is it's not, it's not a Bureau of Credit project where we are putting an initiative on the community. We are the incubators. The community is the juice. That analogy doesn't really go together, but I feel like people probably know what I mean. Community members come and the Task Force says, give us your ideas and we'll make it happen. So these community partners were interested in doing something for the people that they serve. They were excited about it, and so the Pinwheel Project got put together as a way for them to spread awareness, decrease stigma, and make sure that everybody has a number you can call to lean on alone. Some of our other initiatives, we have free suicide prevention training. There's a model that we use called Question, Persuade, Refer, but we're also happy to develop trainings based on specific needs of the community group or group of people. We partner with the Coroner's Office to offer outreach, care, and support after there is a suicide loss. The folks who work for the coroner are the utmost respectful, and the way that they treat dignity at the end of life is something that has been, I think, provided a lot of hope to some of the lost survivors on our Task Force. The projects that we have going on with the law enforcement and first responder focus could be their whole presentation. We have folks from our Veterans Response Team who are here today, and in each of those trainings, we include suicide prevention information. We have QPR trainers specific for police and for EMS. We have suicide death review teams to learn as much as we can from everybody that we lose, to hopefully lose less people, work closely with the schools, work closely with universities with big grants who come in and help us look at our data, the Peyton Heart Projects. We have subcommittees. So if you have a specific interest, veterans, older adults, youth, that's the kind of work that we're doing. And then it would not make sense to talk about suicide prevention and leave without giving you a number you can call. The best suicide prevention work happens amongst ourselves when we are being kind to each other, when we are connecting with each other, when we are reaching out. But you can't do it alone, right? There are times when we need help, we need professional help, or we need coaching, and we need someone to have our back. And so everything on here that you see is 24/7. 988 is the national hotline that got rolled out a little over a year ago. You can call that from anywhere in the country, and you'll get connected to a registered crisis center. In the bottom right-hand corner is our local Montgomery County Mobile Crisis Team, also 24/7. If that is a number you're familiar with and you've used before, still active, you can call at any time. So basically, in Montgomery County, 988 and Mobile Crisis are sort of the two numbers to know. And life can be really hard. That's not news to anybody, but we don't have to do it alone, and when we don't do it alone, there's a lot more hope. And so if you have an interest in joining us, please do. I'm going to put a 988 FAQ paper back on the back table, and I just appreciate the opportunity to come talk about this.
Ms. Trout, thank you for being here every year, but thank you for the work that you do 364 days of the year when you're not here. As you know, I did the QPR training because you encouraged me to do it back in 2017, and I just did it because you encouraged me to do it. Twice since then, I've had to ask that question of someone, are you considering suicide, which is the hardest thing to do but can make all the difference? So I would encourage anyone, whether you're joined the Task Force or not, to take that training because it definitely makes a difference. But we appreciate all that you do and all that the Task Force does all year round. So thank you for being here. Thank you. Sheriff Kilkeny.
Thank you very much. So today is a very, very good day. I want to thank you Chair Lawrence for inviting us, Commissioner Winder, Commissioner Gale. Great to see COO Saltzian. Great to see Solicitor McGary back and his old chair. So today is a great day because next year, we won again, and we're going for the hat-trick next year. So I'll tell you a little bit about it. We have our Honor Guard right behind us here, and so I'm proud to be here today to acknowledge the achievement that they won for the second year in a row, the state competition at the Pennsylvania Sheriff's Conference, which was in State College about two months ago. And their victory there is a testament to their dedication and exceptional skill. It's also especially significant as it was our 100th year anniversary for the Pennsylvania Sheriff's Association. I'm actually vice president of the association and in line to be the first Montgomery County president since the 1950s. So I'm very, very involved in the Sheriff's Association. We participate in all these activities, but these folks really did the work. So under the direction of Deputy Brian Lukens, who many of you know, he's not here today, the guard displayed the precision, poise, and polis, which would have made them one of the most decorated and sought-after units in the region. So we have Deputies Capiello, Smith, Cuchere, McMichael, and our first female member of the Honor Guard, Deputy Mackenzie Scott. And they work diligently, they train after work to do military formations, work throughout our communities, and being out there for veterans, for parades, they go to a lot of senior homes that I go to and do ceremonies, especially for veterans. On their own time, they're not getting extra money for that, and they perform nearly flawless execution to bring home the trophy. Sadly, that trophy bears the name of Deputy Lukens' late sons, Brian Jr. and Parker Lukens, who many, you remember about five years ago, had an unimaginable tragedy. And the Sheriff's Association, statewide organization, after that name, this trophy after them, after his son, Smith, and New Brian, always participated in this competition. So once again, the Honor Guard has done Montgomery County proud. We're going for the hat-trick next year, and our office and county is really in a good place, but it's really for them. And I'd like to bring over Deputy Alex Cuchere to say a few words from their perspective. So thank you.
Thank you all for having me here today and all of us. We work pretty hard. We practice at least once a week from April, maybe twice a week from April to July. I wish the other two were able to be here, but they're on vacation and they weren't able to attend today, but I'm glad that Smith and Capiello were allowed to be here today. We have the full support of the sheriff and the chief to do what we do. Late-night practices, after-work practices, being able to go to details like parades and funerals and everything like that, like the sheriff said. But we also wouldn't be able to do it if the Lukens Foundation didn't sponsor the event. Brian and Tracy, they sponsor the event through their foundation, their foundations for kids, for families and parents, if they can't afford to send their kids to community sporting camps and stuff like that, they cover the cost for those kids. So we're really thankful that they're able to put this event on and let all of us attend and compete. It's a friendly competition, and we, every year, we get to know more people, so we're really excited about that. We're excited to go back next year and attend. It's in York County, I believe, next year, and York County said, well, you better bring your A-game because we'll be there too. So we're just excited for the opportunity, so thank you for having us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, I didn't realize that the trophy was named after Deputy Lukens' children, but that's so, so appropriate. Want to thank you for being here, everyone. Thank you. I see you out in the community all year round, working on this. But thank you for making Montgomery County proud, and we wish you luck as you go for the three-peat. I'm surprised the sheriff didn't note that that would be the same number of national championships as Villanova has, so at that point. But thank you, congratulations, but not just for this award, but for what you do out in our community all year round.
Congratulations.
I too. Congratulate all of you. Well done.
All right, we will now move on to public comment.
First up is Giuseppe Monticelli.
I noticed that Robbie, head of security, is rushing up here right at three minutes to whisk anybody away. I think it's a waste of his time and energy, and I think I know why you're doing that now. Also, one of the speakers on Zoom was literally cut off. Her mic was shut off. She didn't even know it. I know the woman, and she didn't even know that her mic was cut off. So you should at least allow Zoom people to at least know with other timers up or finish the sentence. Anybody should be able to finish the sentence. It just shows that you don't care, you're not listening, because soon as that bell goes off, we have to shut up and sit down. So why don't you start paying attention? Thank you.
Giuseppe Creaney Monticelli, primary Springfield, secondary Conshohocken. So I'm going to be very excited to get out of this meeting and read here if we're going to have the truth or a lot of lies. I just got from Jason Vendetti at AD Marble at 9:15, the minutes for the West Valley Green Road Bridge, I think 58 or 59 it is. We're going to see how those memes are. I've been waiting for them since about mid-July. I'm going to object on agenda items. I can't even go into detail here because, you know, guys, we only have three minutes. Isn't that a shame? I'm going to object here on J6. I don't know if this is for COVID. What's up this? What is this for? I'm going to object without knowing what it's for. K1, why we need a media company for 109. K3. K4. K5. K10 and 11 were suspicious to me, but those suspicions were dispelled, so you can vote in the favor of those. K13, negative. We could be doing a lot better with our suicide awareness, and I don't see a timer here up on my docket. I guess someone's got it going. Oh, there, that's right. It's a brand-new timer. By the way, speaking about that timer, I don't remember seeing in the agenda purchasing of a timer, or does that come from the general fund? So that's my question. But we can do a lot more better awareness with suicide. I am a crisis text line crisis counselor, and you guys could be putting a whole bunch of suicide awareness posters inside this county building, perhaps right next to the Department of State and Labor postings that lets everyone know about their work rights. Maybe you can post, and, you know, Mr. Chairman, I have a big poster from our headquarters in New York, got crisis text line, that I'd be more than willing to hand over to the county to have that on display because it's important that our county employees, you know, it's a government run by the people for the people. We need to take care of our employees that we employ. So I want to see a poster perhaps down there. Really nice show of that historical architectural review board back in August, guys. Really nice. Check it out if you haven't. I have an objection I would like to lodge, too. My objection is people on Zoom, as I've been made aware back in June, myself, when I was on Zoom, we can't object. The chat is always shut off except for public comment period. That's my objection.
Next is Pauline Brockio.
Good morning, Pauline Brockio from Townes and Township. It was five years ago today that I first made public that Ken Lawrence raped me, and he's still sitting here, so obviously, no one has ever taken that seriously. Rape is a serious issue, and I was drugged first and then raped by Ken, and I don't know if anybody else raped me that night. I did speak to Ken privately, but he would not. I did speak to Ken privately, but he would not deny raping me, but he did not explain or give me any...
Excuse me, miss, please retain your comments to county business.
Yes, I am, because actually, according to the, you know what? We went through this, right? I can speak about the commissioners, because that, he's, he's a commissioner.
No, that's not true.
Stop wasting my minutes or stop the clock.
No, I'm not stopping the clock.
Well, then shut up. Anyway, so you're still here. Lot of people have been dismissed from their offices for a lot less than rape. So I'm not sure why Joe never said anything, very disappointed in that. And if you wonder why you were not being reelected, that's probably a big part of it, because you don't open your mouth at the right time. On July 20th, when Barbara read about the prison being demolished, you said negative vote, but you didn't explain anything. And I was at the August 23rd meeting, and you were so rude, disgustingly so, to Mr. Seiler. And, you know, and I'm, I'm sitting there thinking, oh, he wants everybody to be so nice and polite and respectful. Well, why should we respect you when you have no respect for anybody? Do you even respect your own mother, that you can go out and drug and rape women?
Again, I'm going to warn you to please contain your comments to county business.
And I'm telling you to be quiet. So the thing is, oh, 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 now you want somebody to, no, see, this is wrong.
It's not wrong.
Yeah, it is.
You're limited to...
Do not touch me! And Robbie doesn't have to come up here to take me away. He can stand there, he can talk to me, but he doesn't have to take me away because I'm well within my rights, according to the case law of Pensbury School Board, who lost because of what the school board was doing to people coming up and commenting. And they determined that anybody who wants to make a comment can about any subject, and you just have to sit there and take it. So that's what you have to do. It's not up to me to have to censor myself because censorship is wrong. And you are now going to perpetrate a huge heist because you're not going to demolish the prison. You're going to take it apart stone by stone, and that stone will be resold for millions of dollars, of which you will get a cut, Shapiro will get a cut, Arkush will get a cut, and whoever else is privy to that. Oh, Singh, the code enforcement guy. Him too. Thank you. And you really better stop interrupting if you don't want to stop the clock. And that's my alarm.
I hope you get the help you need.
You know what? You need to leave. You need to get out of here.
Be seated.
Excuse yourselves.
Next up is David Morgan.
Good morning. I'm David Morgan from Ambler. And as we have mentioned, kids are back to school and the school breakfast program has started. It had origination with Governor Wolf, and then many states, including South Dakota, have a program like this, which can help students concentrate. I just would ask commissioners to review, maybe with the Public Health Department, dental aspects of this, because as a young person, I had six cavities from eating sweet cereals and stuff like that before school started. So how they handle that, either washing down, having a chance to have their teeth cleaned, I just almost had time to say that last meeting, but I ran out of time with three minutes. So perhaps Public Health, you could work with that, maybe to have the best dental health practices possible and avoid six cavities or root canals. Then, last meeting, I mentioned that there was this extreme loss to women and children of the Real Alternatives Program and that Commissioner Lawrence, you know the governor and Dr. Arkush there, and perhaps you have been able to say something with them. This is about $70 million program, which, like our Monco Mama's program, works towards better birth outcomes, helping women with interfacing with the medical system for better outcomes in general for life. And we're, we're just blessed by having this program, but I was a little bit disappointed to know the level of funding from our July meeting. The last page has maternity, maternity care coalition receiving $17,736 and with an additional $2,000. So it's under $20,000, which is less than a salary for a person doing that. So I wish that we would really have more to our program for promoting life of the unborn and for the women having children. There was a sign on the chapter vehicle, but it was one of only, only vehicle I saw with about Monco Mama's. So perhaps it could be more widespread. We know our, our children are so wonderful that I've mentioned about how at eight weeks, they have fingers and toes, and 12 weeks fully formed in the first trimester. And also another amazing fact is that at 20 days, the foundation of the entire nervous system has been laid down in the preborn child. So to really appreciate our wonder of life and to really think about how we can spend less, which is extreme overspending on buildings. We have the center across the street, $415 million was mentioned, but it's exceeded. And how we could work towards just think, think of people rather than buildings as a priority, especially with our foundations of the next generation, the unborn children.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
Next up is Jeanne White, and she is on Zoom.
Hi, Jeanne White, Montgomery Township. Last meeting, we, the people, addressed the commissioners that we wanted to return to hand-counted paper ballots counted at the precinct level to allow for ballot security at the people's precinct rather than the suspect lack of ballot chain of custody displayed at the county level. For example, county employees rather than sheriffs picking up drop box ballots and transporting ballots being moved from the county office floor six to floor eight for the 2022 general election provisional ballot challenges by a single county employee without sheriff or any other assistance. And Joe Bags moved in personal vehicles rather than by county sheriffs to centralized tabulation centers. Chair, Chair Lawrence responded that Act 77 removed that option. Let the record show that we, the people, were unconstitutionally denied our Pennsylvania constitutional right to vote on whether Act 77 could be legislated rather than voted on by the people as an amendment to the PA Constitution election law. This is a serious violation of the people's rights against government overthrowing the people's powers designated by our forefathers in both the PA and overarching U.S. Constitution. If state, county, and locally elected officials are our representative government, the legislative enactment of Act 77 shows us otherwise. We want our representative form of government in accordance with our U.S. and PA constitutions restored in Montgomery County and at the local precincts. With this in mind, we are petitioning the commissioners to meet with we, the people, so we can get a petition on the 2024 primary ballot to discontinue election voting systems in Montgomery County and return to paper ballots hand-counted at the precinct as our forefathers designed for the people to decide, not government to overthrow the people's rights, the pure definition of government tyranny. Suicide awareness, transgendering children does impact suicide rates. Stop the nonsense. In PA, children cannot drink until 21, cannot vote until 18, cannot buy cigarettes until 18, but can elect to chop off body parts and commit to lifelong pharmaceutical dependency to maintain non-birth sexual biological nature outrageously without parental knowledge. Secondly, Commissioner Winder, you still have not removed your campaign Winder Koch sign posted at the traffic light at Welsh Road by the Aussie Plaza in North Wales. Can you please respect our election laws? By removing your Koch-Winder sign, we can contact local enforcement to do what you neglect to do as required by election law. Thank you.
Ten seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Thanks for the address, and I'll have somebody go get it.
I have an objection. Your comment to me is inappropriate. I'm not doing anything for you to say that.
That's not objection.
And for him, and you know what? For him to say anything to me about needing help? You're the one who's sick.
He's seated now.
That you want to knock down a prison because of some injustices that are in your head.
Pauline, he's seated.
Next is Marlene Lasca, also on Zoom. Marlene?
Okay, I'm sorry. Marlene Lasca, Upper Providence Township. Last, last meeting, we, the people, let it be known to this board that we wanted to start a conversation about returning Monco elections back to the precincts and to, including hand-counting all, all paper ballots, game day absentee and mail-in. At last month's meeting, we were educated by the chair, thank you, Ken, that Act 77 prevented the precincts from canvassing the mail-in ballots. We did review Act 77, and we confirmed that Ken was partially right. That is, Act 77 appears to modify, modify Section 1308A of the Pennsylvania Election Code, removing distribution of absentee ballots from election districts and adding absentee ballots and mail-in ballots be canvassed at the county. However, subsequent to this research, we became aware that two counties, two Pennsylvania counties delegated this task back to the precincts with attorneys, with attorneys confirming this was doable. As such, we are asking Monco to follow this lead and delegate back to the precincts the hand-counting of all ballots. We also researched Monco's electronic voting systems history, Dominion Inn in Monco, and discovered Monco was one of nine Pennsylvania counties to debut machine counting for the 2019 primary. We also discovered DHS urged local officials across the county to update voting procedures requiring counties to select voting systems that meet the new paper ballot criteria known later than 31st of December 2019. We are hoping that the paper ballots used today are easily converted into the standard Pennsylvania election code ballots, if conversion at all is required. This will be a topic of discussion when we meet with county reps. Also, Article 11A of the Pennsylvania Election Code does address electronic voting systems in detail. In fact, the article talks about a question on the ballot for registered electors to approve electronic voting systems. We're thinking that the DHS, DHS EDIC overruled this step since we couldn't find a record that such a question ever appeared on a Monco ballot. Anyway, section 1104AE talks about discontinuance of the use of electronic voting systems. We will be working on the petition for a question to be, to be put on to the spring 2024 primary ballot.
Ten seconds left.
Thank you.
Next is Nicole Simonetti. Oh, I'm sorry, Natalie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, Natalie Simonetti, Palford. I just wanted to say thank you for putting a time limit on public comments. Most of us tune into these meetings because we want to be informed about what's happening with our local county government. And the phenomenon over the last few years of people using these public meetings as a forum to push their extremist political agenda has taken valuable time away from people with serious, valid, and relevant concerns, turning public comment periods into a circus-like atmosphere. I don't see them going to any meetings run by their political allies and complaining about the time limits on public comment. Why not? That's all I had to say. Thank you.
That is all for public comments.
Okay. We will now move on to approval of the August 17th, 2023 minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the August 17th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are passed. Next up, we have an ordinance, Mr. Dorton.
Good morning, commissioners. Next slide, please. Today, I'm going to review with you our plans for a new money bond issue that was anticipated in the 23 budget, which will primarily fund the 23 and 24 capital projects. At the moment, we've been working with our financing team. We're proposing a Series A for the capital improvement plan projects. And then separately, as we have done in recent years, a Series B for the roads and bridge capital projects. That's primarily funded the debt service on that issue through the motor vehicle registration fees. With the board's approval, the proposed bond ordinance, this will allow the county's finance team to take the necessary steps and complete the proposed financing over the next 60 days. Next slide. So today, we have our financing team with us. It's unchanged from last year. Suzanne Mays with Cozen O'Connor will serve as bond counsel. And behind me, PFM will serve as financial advisor, Dan Kozlov and John Karate. Next slide, please. Just turning to the adopted 23 capital fund budget, you can see by functional area, approximately 70% of the projected funding is in the category of the county campus plan and asset and infrastructure. This is where the majority of the major county infrastructure building, land improvement projects exist. The county campus plan encompasses the Justice Center. Overall, the projected budgetary spending is approximately $269.8 million. Next slide, please. When we were doing the budget planning around this time last year and what was approved in the 23 budget, the funding sources that were anticipated or outlined, as you can see on the slide, 55% of the overall funding was anticipated from a new money, a new money bond issue. We also projected that we would have fund balance carryover from '22 into '23, which would be utilized in conjunction with the new money bond issue. And separately, is the motor vehicle registration bond proceeds. As I said, that's a dedicated bond issue strictly for road and bridge projects. And so that, that particular funding was also carried over and was, is being utilized this year towards those projects. Next slide, please. Just to take a, take a look back at some of the prior bond issues in recent years of the county, some refundings, but I'm primarily focused on the new money bond issues here, going back to '17. You can see, beginning with the bond issue last year, which was purely a new money bond issue, just one series for the capital projects fund. We priced the true interest cost overall was approximately 3.5%. In '21, you can see we hit record lows with the, with the market, and we priced under 2%. But generally, if you go back to '17 between '19, you know, we were in the two and a half, you know, to 2.75% range. So we know things have changed with the Fed increasing the short-term interest rates so aggressively. The market has changed and we're pricing slightly higher. PFM will continue to analyze this bond issue and frame out the sizing of it, but right now, it's looking like that may price in about the 4% range. Hopefully, we'll beat that, but as I said, we'll continue to monitor that. Next slide, please. So here's what's proposed, and this is what the board's going to be taking action on today with the approval of the ordinance. We're proposing a Series A, which will, as I said, strictly fund the, the capital projects for 2023, the remainder of the year, then into 2024. We're projecting about $150 million at the moment that will be needed. That will be the Series A. The Series B, again, will be strictly for the road and bridge projects. That's estimated at $15 million. The debt service on the Series A is funded through the general fund, and as I said, the Series B is funded directly from the motor vehicle registration fee fund. The reason we do that is because it's a PennDOT requirement to utilize those funds for the debt service on the, on those capital projects. Right now, in the budget for '23, and, you know, this was a projection that we put together last year, we had anticipated about $5 million of new projected... last year, we had anticipated about $5 million of new projected debt service to hit in '23, but that was based on projections that we would have gone to market a lot sooner than we are. Some of the capital projects were a bit slower getting off the ground and we didn't spend down the funds as quickly. So we won't have any new debt service expense from this Series A or the Series B in '23. However, beginning in '24, if, you know, our projections hold based on this sizing, you could anticipate about $6 million of new debt service will kick in next year, which will be mostly interest on the new money bond issue. And then thereafter, that jumps up to about $11.3 million between '25 and 2043. That's based on 4% true interest cost, as I had mentioned earlier. We'll continue to monitor and market and give the board's updates as we get closer to the sale date. Next slide, please. So next steps, with approval from the board today on the bond ordinance, we will begin preparing for our rating agency presentation and have a goal to obtain our rating by September 25th to stay consistent with our financing timeline. Obviously, we have the goal to retain the county's highly respected AAA bond credit rating. Same day, right now, projected, once the credit ratings received, we'll issue our preliminary official statement and the notice of the bond sale. Then we'll follow with the competitive bond sale as we have in recent years of both series. The target date for that at the moment is October 4th. Then we would follow the next day at the board meeting, October 5th, and the financing team would report out the results of the bond sale. Closing typically happens, you know, anywhere between 20 to 30 days after the sales. Right now, we're targeting a closing on November 1st. Upon closing, we receive the bond proceeds and they'll be invested in our typical bond proceed accounts. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Durtone. I'll get a motion on the table. I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds 2023 series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $189 million, the proceeds of which would fund capital projects, including renovations to bridges and improvements to roads throughout the county, and to pay the expenses of the issuance of the bonds in a form and according to those terms and conditions, which are stated in the documents that shall accompany this ordinance and shall be made publicly available and shall be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Or comment?
Yeah, I have comment. For several years, I've stated several times that our extremely high capital expenditures will lead to higher debt and higher taxes, both of which have come true. For this reason, I have consistently opposed these capital expenditures. I've opposed the issuance of new money bonds and also oppose the series of tax increases. For this reason, I will oppose this issuance.
Commissioner Gail. Ms. Washington, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion passes two to one. Thank you, Mr. Durtone. Now we have some committee appointments. I will make a motion that Deja Dixon be appointed to the Montgomery County Advisory Council for Equity for a term that begins immediately and expires on September 7th, 2024, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion passes two to one with Commissioner Gail voting no. And now we'll move on to appointments of the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Board. I'll make a motion that Terrence Barnes, Michaelia Davis and Reverend Dr. Sylvester Wright be appointed to the Montgomery County Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for terms to begin immediately and to expire on September 7th, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Personnel, Miss Hale in.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a five-page document dated Thursday, September 7th, 2023, with a timestamp of 7:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and counted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the September 7th, 2023 personnel presentation as given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Ms. O'Malley, advertisements, bids and RFPs.
Yes, we have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for garage doors. The successful responder will provide five rolling motorized garage doors for the Main Street Garage in Norristown. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, bid on behalf of public safety for a custom firefighting foam tender vehicle. The successful responder will provide a customized environmentally responsible foam firefighting vehicle. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for lead assessment provider. The successful responder will provide lead and healthy homes risk assessments for up to 40 selected housing units in Montgomery County. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Four, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a health choices program consultant. The successful responder will provide auditing and financial consulting services for the health choices program managed by the Office of Managed Care Solutions. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Five, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for laboratory testing services. The successful responder will provide laboratory testing services to the Office of Public Health Clinics. Contracts will be awarded to the highest rated responders. Six, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for pharmacy vaccine providers. The successful responders will provide vaccine services to uninsured and underinsured Montgomery County residents. Contracts will be awarded to all qualified respondents. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montaco PA.org/purchasing.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding request for the advertisements of bids and RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract.
One, contract award communications marketing services Perry Media Group LLC of Hummels Town, Pennsylvania, $109,500. Contract provides for recovery plan project marketing services and Justice Center project services. Multiple firms were solicited through the marketing list established through RFP 2321. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure environmental engineering for fuel tank removal, Gilmore and Associates Incorporated of New Britain, PA, $44,350. Contract provides removal of the underground storage tank located in the county-owned surface parking lot at 400 Markley Street, Norristown. Multiple firms solicited through the project enabling list process. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure temporary structure rental William Scottman Incorporated of Baltimore, Maryland, not to exceed $60,000. Contract provides a temporary office structure rental for Lower Perkham and Valley Park. Structure is required due to permanent damages incurred by Hurricane Ida. Equipment is available through an omnia cooperative contract. Four, contract award District Attorney Accounting Services Markham LLP of Philadelphia, PA, not to exceed $75,000. Contract provides for court case-related accounting services. Five, contract award Health and Human Services Trauma Workshop Training Lakeside Global Institute of North Wales, PA, $38,100. Contract provides for a series of interactive trauma-based workshops for county staff and provider staff. Provider chosen from an authorized list of leadership training companies and leadership career coaches as per RFP 2220. Six, contract award Health and Human Services Workforce Consultants Health Management Associates of Lansing, Michigan, $65,000. Contract provides for a workforce capacity assessment with a development and training needs assessment. RFP 2351 was viewed by 79 providers with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of six months with expected completion by April 30, 2024. Seven, contract award Health and Human Services Data Compiling and Reporting Consultant Susquehanna Software Incorporated of Williamsport, PA, $24,800. Contract provides consulting services for state-required reporting, client-level service utilization of persons receiving county-funded mental health services. RFP 2352 was viewed by 71 providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Eight, contract award information and technology solutions software, SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, $66,742.63. Contract provides software and maintenance for the county's domain name system for a one-year period. Info blocks allows all the county systems to connect and communicate with each other countywide and provides real-time monitoring of events on the county's network. Software and maintenance services are available through Sourcewell Cooperative Contract. Nine, contract award information and technology solutions software, Insight Public Sector of Chandler, Arizona, $88,943. Contract provides for the yearly renewal of the Adobe Sign for Enterprise Subscription and Professional Services. Software is available through an omnia cooperative contract. Ten, contract award Recovery Office Architectural and Engineering Services, NOR of Philadelphia, PA, $70,000. Contract provides preliminary architectural and engineering services for the Norristown Community Facilities Project. Multiple firms solicited through the project enabling list process. Eleven, contract award information and technology solutions envelopes, Lyndon Meyer Monroe of King of Pressure, PA, $35,000. Contract provides an estimated quantity of envelopes for print requests submitted from the county's departments to the county print shop. Contract was competitively bid by the Berks County on behalf of the Southeastern Pennsylvania County's Cooperative Purchasing Board. This is the first of two optional annual renewal terms. Twelve, contract amendment assets and infrastructure engineering, Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $17,800. Original contract provided design and engineering services for the reconstruction of Bridge Number 38, Moreland Avenue over Pennypack Creek in Hatboro Borough. Amendment provides for unanticipated additional utility coordination to allow the bridge to be advertised for construction. Thirteen, contract amendment finance, Financial Services PFM Financial Advisors LLC of Philadelphia, PA, not to exceed $40,000. Contract provides public finance financial advisor services for the county. Amendment provides for advanced graphical detail and easy-to-understand depiction of the county budget with regional comparisons. Fourteen, contract rescind and re-award information and technology solutions software, Civica North American Incorporated of Inglewood, Ohio, $1,092,963.90. Rescind of contract awarded on the August 17th, 2023 Commissioners Agenda for a one-year period of maintenance and support to the master data warehouse for Health and Human Services. Re-award of the contract allows for the extension of the Civica Master Data Management Agreement for cloud migration, which moves the service from the Civica cloud and off of the Microsoft cloud, affording the counties a savings of approximately $50,000 per year. Contract is for a five-year term beginning September 8th, 2023. Services are proprietary. Fifteen, contract amendment information and technology solutions, enterprise licensing CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $75,741.15. Original contract provided licensing of all Microsoft products used throughout the county. Amendment provides for additional licensing required for various county projects. Additional licensing is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Sixteen, reimbursement agreement, assets and infrastructure PennDOT reimbursement agreement, Bridge Number 27, Federus Mill Road Bridge over Pennypack Creek in Brynathen Borough, $3,182,000. Authorization request for agreement between PennDOT and Montgomery County provides for a funding agreement reimbursing the county for Bridge Number 27, Federus Mill Road Bridge over Pennypack Creek in Brynathen Borough. Agreement allows for the reimbursement to the county for construction phase engineering costs. Reimbursement and agreement applies for 95% reimbursement to the county. There are four contracts, nine contract renewals and 10 amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Awards of contract, assets and infrastructure, major construction projects.
One, contract award fire pump construction services Scott Building Corporation of Norristown, PA, $328,960. Contract provides for fire pump construction services at the Emergency Operating Center in Eagleville. Specification 6513 was viewed by 19 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, contract award fiber cable service Verizon of Port Washington, PA, not to exceed $45,000. Contract provides a new service connection for the Justice Center. Service is proprietary.
Make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay. Commissioner Winder, aye? Motion passes two to one. Commissioner Gail voting no. Awards of contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Number one, contract award emergency management software licensing Biocchi Incorporated of New Haven, Connecticut, $51,032.50. Contract provides emergency management software for use by the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management. Contract is for a period of one year. Software is proprietary. Two, contract award modular furniture CR Solutions Incorporated of Norristown, PA, $169,118.66. Contract provides custom modular furniture consoles to support a complex IT hardware and communications equipment setup for the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management's Regional Integration Center. Furniture is available through a PA CoStarz contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Any closing commissioner comments? All right, I'll announce that our next meeting will be September 21st, and I'll make a motion to adjourn the September 7th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned and we will convene Salary Board. Welcome, Control Sanchez.
Thank you. Good morning.
Do we have any public comment on Salary Board?
Yes, we do. I did not sign up. May I proceed with my public comment for the Salary Board even though I didn't sign up?
Please identify yourself and your municipality.
Giuseppe Crani Monticelli, Primary Springfield Township, Secondary Concha Hockenborough. I'm going to talk about here with the Salary Board listing, not the personnel list, but the final list, you guys call it. No, new hires, actually, you guys call it. Okay. I'm going to look down here, and I'm looking here at the Courts Department, and it seems like whatever the job title of tipstaff was, they all got laid off. What was this position? What did these very, very exquisite public servants do for us here in the county? I believe the public, the general public, since that is a matter of public interest, I believe that the public would love to know what these fabulous public servants did for us and why their positions were eliminated, aka being laid off. I want to talk about the 911 telecommunicators. On Preston and Steve, within the past two weeks, a radio show here in Philadelphia, they said that the county is looking for a law-
I have an objection, Jason, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. We have objection.
The man is talking and you're laughing. You're not paying attention. You're rude and ignorant and a liar.
No, I think it's a proper objection. We have-
Mr. Monticelli, I was actually asking the solicitor to answer your question when you were done, so I want you to-
Oh, okay.
That's why I was talking while you were-
Oh, okay. Okay, well, thank you, Chairman. Hey, we got Deputy Smith over here. He's been turning on his body cam, just for the record. Tipstaff, you know, I mean, yeah, but 911 telecommunicators. So here's the thing. Preston and Steve Show, Philadelphia Talk Show, they talked about how the county was looking for new 911 telecommunicators. Being a 911 telecommunicator is a very, very hard job. You have to look at multiple computer screens at a time, and I would say, instead of blowing this money on Judge Del Richie, a Justice Center, maybe we can cut back on those expenses, 50K a year, maybe? Maybe the same amount as CPS workers, as DIFIS workers? Maybe 47, maybe 48 we can give them instead of this 44? Maybe some benefits included with that, too? It's a hard job. That's no wonder why you're having a hard time trying to find people. You don't have much going on.
Stand my public comment. I yield the floor back to the chairman. Mr. McGary, will you please just briefly describe the function that tipstaff plays in a courtroom?
Tipstaff can perform functions to assist the judge.
Tipstaff can perform functions to assist the judge in the coordinating of the activities in the courtroom. They can act as court crier or bailiff, those types of activities.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? All right. Ms. Halen.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a six-page document dated Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty-three, with a timestamp of seven thirty a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the September seventh, twenty twenty-three Salary Board presentation as given by the Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Halen and authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. If you looked at our employment opportunities recently, you may have noticed that there are over a hundred job openings at the county. To help educate the public about some of the work that the county does and recruit new employees, our Human Resources Department held a special hiring event on August sixteenth for our Department of Assets and Infrastructure here at Montgomery Plaza. Applicants were able to speak directly with hiring staff and fill out applications on the spot. And during a three-hour period, sixty-five candidates were seen for interviews. On the day of the event, ten individuals were hired for assets and infrastructure, three clerical candidates were referred for second interviews, and a few other candidates were referred for other positions in the county. So I want to thank all the employees that planned and worked the event to make it a success, and I especially wanted to thank our dedicated and hard-working employees in Montgomery County who have been with us, working hard, and taking on more responsibilities and hours to cover during staffing shortages. We appreciate and value you, and we are committed to filling open roles as quickly as we can. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the September seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.